Okay, council, it's seven o'clock. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, council. Roll call.
Council members are present and a quorum has been declared. With councillor Kyle Woodward, absent. I'm excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, with councillor Michael Carson is absent and the city manager, Ms. Brooks, would like to share some things.
Per council direction at your retreat, you did discuss if you would want to have information related to if the absence would be excused or not. So councillor Carson did share with me his childcare fell through at the last minute. Looking at the council policy of what quantifies as excused, it does not seem to qualify, but then also from a public perception perspective, I want to make it clear that excused, unexcused, it's not the end of the world, that there are times that council members may have to miss. Even if it is unexcused, but it does not seem to qualify as excused, and so I wanted to share that with council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is the agenda approval. City manager, I know you would like to make a comment at this time before we go there.
Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
This is just a little bit of a different meeting. We do not have all the information ready yet for the fire mitigation update. I was actually supposed to move that and in my haste to get out of here, I did not. So I would like to remove two A, fire mitigation update. Additionally, when I left, we, working with our community group with early childhood, we were anticipating applying for a grant. Further discussions that happened indicate that we're going to apply for the next round. So I also would like to pull three C. There's more information that's going to be worked on. So if you can approve the agenda minus two A and three C, please.
Okay, councillor Daniel.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as amended by removing section B two A and section B three C.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so are we excusing Mr. Carson from the meeting?
No, because it's not an excused absence. Right? He's just not present.
Okay, we're good.
One more comment to, how do we handle Mr. Woodward's? For the record. Councillor.
I think the record reflects that he is no longer on council, so six or five councillors out of the six are present. And you've got an item on your agenda for dealing with that later on tonight.
All right, thank you.
Right. Got a motion, got a second, no further discussion? Please start voting. Ms. Young.
And the motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us next to the next item, citizen comments. This is a segment of the agenda where we ask anyone who's turning comment cards to come up to the podium and make their comments. I do ask that you keep your comments within three minutes. We have a clock that will keep time. If you're still talking at the three minute mark, I will politely ask you to end the conversation at that time. Right now, I don't have any cards here, so I am going to go to Zoom. Ms. Young, could you give the Zoom participants instructions of how to raise their hand if they would like to make a comment at this time?
If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak, you may raise your hand by using the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen, or you may press star nine if appearing by phone.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so we'll go ahead and close the citizen comment section. And we'll go to the next item on the agenda, ceremonial items, proclamation, Alamosa Day. We have anyone in the audience who would like to come up to the podium before we read the proclamation and state your name and feel free to make any comments that you have.
Good evening, mayor, fellow council members. My name's Erin Minks. I'm here as a private citizen. Also, we have here today.
Barbara Cruz, private citizen.
We are part of a very informal committee through the heritage area and some members of your historic preservation commission that are working to establish an annual event to recognize when the city was founded, essentially in a series of days, when buildings we know were moved from Garland City to Alamosa in late June and July of eighteen seventy-eight. And this year, we've gotten some momentum. We've had some great participants through our committee. And we are at a point now where we're actually going to do something on June twenty-fifth. We're slowly rolling out our publicity on it, so we're supposed to have an article.
It's going in the career.
This week.
I just got word that John Waters had resigned, so they're a little bit behind, but there's two articles coming soon. Soon as I can get them in.
There's probably about five of us that are involved in this. Commissioner Lori Lasky is also really involved in this, but she's out this week, so normally she would be here. Jeff Owesley, Herman Martinez, Jason Medina. But we intend to do an event where we start in Fort Garland, we load a fake building of a certain size onto a flatbed truck, which we are then going to move, Eric, this looks, yeah, then we're going to move to Alamosa. This is how it actually happened, is they actually moved four buildings, we know they actually did physically move. And they had breakfast in one of them and then had dinner in the same building in Alamosa, which was called the Perry House. So we're really going to try and find a decent Perry House that we can actually eat in and move it, in period clothing, of course. So we have commitments from, Ty has been willing to play along for quite some time now, so we're happy to have his involvement. We welcome all of yours. But the proclamation is to create, to some degree, an annual day that potentially could be a day every year when Alamosa is that same day in eighteen seventy-eight, when the town was founded.
Okay, all right, thank you for the.
So we'd like to see all of you there participating, wear some period clothing and
Barb or one of her shirts tonight.
So when is it started on the twenty-fifth?
So we're probably, we were trying to figure out if we had an option to work with the train and they basically said they support us, but they can't participate. So we'll probably launch from Fort Garland around ten thirty and then we'll arrive here twelve, twelve-thirty. We'll do a ceremony in Fort Garland too, because we're working with some folks in Costilla County who were involved and would have been at the fort at that time. And Lawrence Pacheco is helping us with that and some other folks there. So we'd probably get here around noon, but we'll follow up with you guys on details.
And the visitor's center at Pipo is where the activities will happen.
And we have some actual historic figures that we will need actors to portray. And so we are working on filling those roles. So.
And this is a soft opening. This is just a practice one.
But we'd love to have you guys be a part of it, so.
Awesome. Thank you all so very much. We're going to read the proclamation and then we'll come down and present it to you, okay? The city of Alamosa, Alamosa Day proclamation, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas in eighteen seventy-seven, the idea of the town of Alamosa briefly known as Rio Bravo was carefully selected at the bend of the river by Alexander Cameron Hunt to establish as a railroad hub in the San Luis Valley. And whereas the site that became the city of Alamosa has the unique story of being developed within days in June and July eighteen seventy-eight with the transportation of key buildings from Garland City via railcar to the current hub at Hunt and Sixth Street. And whereas, Alamosa became the major regional hub for transportation of timber, mining, livestock and agricultural goods from the San Juan Mountains and San Luis Valley, connecting them to Pueblo and other major railroad hubs. And whereas, according to Leland Fitz, by eighteen ninety and for fifty years later, Alamosa was the absolute center of narrow gauge railroading in America. And whereas, Alamosa has become a thriving city and remains the economic heart of the San Luis Valley. And whereas, it is important to recognize and celebrate the history of our town to ensure the prosperity of. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Ty Coleman, mayor of the city of Alamosa, and on behalf of the entire city council, proclaim the last day of June from this day forward to be Alamosa Day in the San Luis Valley and urge all citizens to celebrate their hometown and participate fitnly in its observance. All right, thank you. Okay, council, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, consent calendar eight.
Mayor, I move that we approve and set calendar A.
Okay.
I just wanted to share that on the minutes, updated version has been submitted with revisions.
Okay, all right, thank you. So.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Start voting, please.
And the motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Young. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, presentation from outside agency, annual update from the Bicycle Coalition. We have Grantley here today. Come on up, Brent.
Good evening, council. Thanks for having me here tonight to talk about the Alamosa Bicycle Coalition a little bit. My name is Grantley Showalter, and yeah, I'm excited to give you a little rundown of what we've been doing the past year or so. So yeah, to start off, the Alamosa Bicycle Coalition has been around for about three or so years now. Our young nonprofit in Alamosa that's located in the back room of Hobby Town on Main Street. So if you're passing by there, feel free to stop by and say hello. Our mission statement is to increase the physical, social, emotional and economic well-being of youth and adults, especially those with limited access to private or public transportation by increasing their access to bicycles, cycling safety and bicycle repair. So yeah, from last year, I'll kind of give you a rundown of some things that we did last year, kind of what we're doing at the moment and what we're kind of looking forward to in the future. So last year, we partnered with a lot of different organizations in Alamosa to provide bike repair, safety, bicycle rides and access to bikes. Some of those organizations are the Boys and Girls Club, Pals, Los Promotores, Advantage Treatment Centers, events with the city like the Rio Trio, La Puente Street Outreach and other programs as well. Through those partnerships, we served over eighty individuals with pop-up events where we set up our tool stands and tools and just helped people out. Also through the partnerships, we were able to connect forty-one people in need of reliable transportation with a working bike that they can use to get around. And over a hundred people who already had a bike and just needed some help repairing it, getting it running. In addition to those things, we also offered our own class series for folks to build skills in their own bicycle repair and that kind of thing. Some of those classes, examples are our master mechanic class, earn a bike and a homeschool bike skills program that we partnered with AAI, that's Alpine Achiever Initiative, to bring more bike skills to our community. Another one is our bimonthly mechanic Monday. So it's a Monday evening when anyone can stop by the shop and borrow the tools, learn from each other and work on bikes together. We're also working to bring folks who have typically been marginalized from bike spaces into the bike fold, basically. So having specific events to help more people feel comfortable in a bike shop or working on their bikes, including women, non-binary folks and people of color. So currently, we're partnering with some new organizations in addition to the ones I listed earlier to provide bike programming for kids and youth. The Rio Grande Farm Park is doing a Rising Stewards program where they have some kids, or some high schoolers, I should say, working on projects with them. So we've partnered with them to do bike rides and bike repair. In addition, the Tierra Nueva Housing Complex, which is kind of on the west side of town. We've done some programming with the kids there to help make those bikes, make their bikes accessible and more usable. And then also, we're partnering with the city of Alamosa through the Gen Wild Coalition to provide pedaling, learning to pedal and learning to balance classes for young kids. Those are on Monday evenings, starting at four PM. So if anyone has kids that they're interested in participating and learning to pedal or learning to balance on a bike, we have bikes that we've had donated that we've turned into balance bikes and some that have pedals as well. So kids can get access to a bike, learn how to pedal and have fun with us. It's out in the parking lot here, just west of this building. On the twenty-seventh, so in two weeks, it'll be the last of that class series and we're going to have a bike parade. So we're inviting everyone who wants to bike to work. It's also Bike to Work Month. So if you want to bike to work, you can come afterwards. We're going to have a little bike parade. There'll be some treats for the kids and just a fun time. That's on the twenty-seventh, so in two weeks, on that Monday evening. Everyone is welcome and if you do have a kid that's interested in participating in the learning to pedal or learning to balance, you can sign up through the city's website. Kind of looking forward, we're looking at some exciting new partnerships as well. We're stoked to be working with SLV Go, that's SLV Great Outdoors, which is a nonprofit that makes the outdoors more accessible through trail development and programs to work to, yeah, make the outdoors more accessible. So we're working with them to provide a few people through their Embahadores program. So that's Hispanic folk to lead bike rides, to lead fishing trips, different stuff like that, to kind of get more people outside, providing bikes and bike training for them in that program. We're also working with training some local Hispanic young folks who want to learn more kind of professionally in the bike mechanic realm to kind of help bridge the gap to reaching all members of our community, including the Hispanic people who sometimes need transportation as well as the rest of us. So we're really excited about that, really getting some solid skills in our community around bikes and access to reliable transportation in form of bikes. So yeah, that's kind of the update on what we're doing. Really grateful for the outside funding that we've received. With that support, we've been able to keep these programs going and we're really grateful to the city council members for the continued support. So thank you.
You're welcome. We're going to have some council members make some comments before you step down. Okay, I'll start off with councillor Grego, followed by councillor Daniel, and then councillor, I mean councillor Vio.
Mister Showalter, you've been doing a lot of training and stuff. One thing, and I don't know if I missed it, are we training kids? Because I see them sometimes driving on the wrong side of the road. And I think you could even get a ticket if you're caught driving on the wrong side of the road.
Yeah.
Are we doing any kind of training like that or awareness of proper, you know, if you're driving on the highway, I mean down the streets or whatever?
Yeah, definitely, I would say with our, like, extended class series that we did with the homeschool group, we had a chance to do some basic, like, starting and stopping, obeying traffic rules. And then we kind of advanced to how to navigate traffic, when to, like, where is the safe place to ride? When to, you know, make certain turns or different stuff like that. So yeah, there's some of that going on as well. Yeah, definitely.
And councillor Grego, Grantley's not saying this, but in a lot of other communities, a lot of times the city has an educational program that they put on. So we could use all the help through our social media, if you have any content, to help educate the public as well, especially during Bike Month and stuff like that. That is an area for us to grow what we're putting out from an education perspective.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Daniel, and then councillor Vio.
Thank you, Mike. Grantley, thank you so much. I just really wanted to say all of the inclusive efforts that you and your team do are really helping people who may have felt uncomfortable, right, for whatever of those reasons. I think you have a safe place where people can go, a safe place for people to learn and have a community, and I just really wanted to say thank you. I think that's so important.
Appreciate that.
Councillor Vio.
Thank you, mayor. I want to echo what councillor Daniel said. In your presentation, you said that you're trying to help people, all people in our community with bike safety, bike awareness and empowering people to ride a bike, and that's pretty good. There's a need in our community and you're filling that need. So just appreciate you and your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Hensley.
So on Monday, I'm assuming you were here on Monday. So I was actually going to the post office and I noticed and I was like, what is that that's going on? And so that is, I think, really awesome. On the parade that you're planning to do, I think that's great, we could, it sounds like anybody who wants to ride their bike can be included. So even if it's kids who are a little older than the training part, they can be and you're going to sort of have that parade to do it?
Yes, yeah. All ages. We're hoping some adults will participate as well. We have some kind of goofy bikes, like a tall bike, which is two frames welded on top of each other, we'll have there. And then we'll have a tandem, so people can just try things out and just have some fun. So yeah, definitely older kids, definitely some adults. And we'll probably just do like a little loop on the paved paths here around Cold Park. And then, yeah, just kind of have some treats, hang out.
Do you have a time set for that yet?
The classes start at four, so I think we may kind of combine, because there's two classes. So it's one from four to four fifty for the learning to balance, and then learning to pedal is five to five fifty. So we may combine the two classes so that at five o'clock, we will kind of start the parade. But we haven't, I'll make sure we have the more solid details publicized so that, yeah, you can get that information.
I think it's just a great idea and everything that you're doing and obviously helping those that are having a harder time. So obviously, sometimes repairing your bike, things like that, we think bikes is something that anybody can pick up a bike and use, but there are repairs and there are things that are involved to it. And what's nice about our size of community is, obviously, it gets a little cold sometimes, but for the most part, we really can bike from one end to the other. And so thank you so much for all you're doing and putting that together.
Yeah, yeah, thank you all.
Thank you, councillor Hensley. Grantley, I'll just wrap things up. Thank you so very much. It's so good to see your numbers increasing and you're serving everyone in the community who needs help. Keep up the great work.
Great, thank you.
Take care. Okay, council, up next we have an update from Sherry Valdez, executive director of the Early Childhood Council of the San Luis Valley.
Thank you, mayor and city council members. I'm Sherry Valdez with the Early Childhood Council, as introduced. And we are a nonprofit organization that has been involved in really supporting the access and quality to early childhood services and connecting families with those services for well over twenty years. And right now, there's so much momentum. There's so much recognition that we're seeing and hearing. And we have just some updates to give and then I'll kind of address maybe one of the items that was on the agenda through that update. So. So in Colorado, last year legislation passed to open up a new State Department. And I understand that it's the thirtieth State Department in Colorado, and that's all we can have under current legislation. So it is a department of early childhood. And that will be stood up officially on July one, and they have hired an executive director, Dr. Lisa Roy, who comes back to Colorado. She's been here, has a lot of history, has worked in the early childhood field, worked in philanthropy. She really understands the makeup and kind of where we've come from in early childhood in Colorado. The deputy executive director named is Mary Alice Cohen, and some of you may know her. We have worked with her for many years on the, as the director of Office of Early Childhood, which is under the Department of Human Services. So we're excited to have both of them really leading this charge. They're hiring additional admin staff, so they're getting ready to go. And one of the biggest purposes of this new department was to manage the universal preschool program. And this is the free ten hours per week for every child in Colorado, as space allows. And it is, it's going to be supported by Proposition EE, which was passed by the voters, and that will support this free ten hours a week. And what that means is that children, all children, we hope, will get to the place where we have facilities that we'll be able to offer the ten free hours a week. Then if there's additional needs for longer days or more days during the week, then we certainly have other funding opportunities, childcare assistance program, other preschool funds that can hopefully help and fill that need for families. So we're excited and we're a little bit scared about all of this. The next part of that is that in order to help our local providers and our local families navigate this system, there needs to be a local coordinating organization. And, you know, it's like any state department, has a local department of some sort. And so that's really what the meaning behind this is. And so we have had four community meetings in the last couple of months, working with school districts, keeping in touch with the director of social services in all the counties, around childcare assistance program, other nonprofit organizations, county administrators, our board of directors, and also this early childhood stakeholders group membership that I'll talk about next. And through those meetings, we've come to consensus that the right organization to take this on and apply for the local coordinating organization or LCO is the Early Childhood Council. And it really is a good fit. It's what we do now. We navigate, we help families navigate the system. We help connect them to needed services. We support our licensed childcare providers. We help folks that want to become licensed go through that process. We have a pretty strong professional development program where we're supporting the workforce with scholarships, training, things like that. So we're going to apply for that and it's due in another week, ten days. So we'll do that and we're hopeful that we can find the staffing, you know, to help us do this work. That's our biggest concern across the board. And then we'll have a planning period that'll be due in the fall. We'll need a plan that goes back to the new department in the fall. And it'll talk about how we intend as a community, this will be the same community members, whoever else we can get to come to the table, to help us think this through. Where are our spaces? How many children do we have? In what districts? What do families want? And when we go through that process, we'll be able to turn that into the department and they will have, the hope is additional staff there to help us through this process as well. So we'll turn that in, and year one is really about universal preschool. And then in the following years, it is about connecting families with all services, birth to five, home visitation, early intervention, any of those things that come up for families. Okay, next thing happening. So locally, for about the last two and a half years, this really grassroots initiative, what we're calling the San Luis Valley Early Care and Learning Initiative, has a group of early childhood stakeholders, and this group is made up of employers, key leaders in the community, community members that really care about this issue and want key leaders in the community, um, community members that really care about this issue and want to make a difference. School districts, um, we have the university, we have Valleywide, the hospital. The City Council has been involved in some of these conversations, um, when we're at the table with, with Heather and Rachel, keeping in touch with the group. And what, what this group wants to do is really increase access to licensed childcare. They're really seeing it as employers that are great need. They're hearing that they, they can't hire folks because they don't have childcare. Um, we heard, heard an example of that this evening, right? Um, and it's just not available. It's, it's really tough. So this group really wants to work and make an investment for one, increasing access for their employees or potential employees to increase recruitment and, and retention of staff. Um, it's really about having model programs where we can use it as lab schools and we can show what best practices and we can use it to help to educate new workforce. In some of these conversations, we also have, you know, both Trinidad and, and the university, Adams University on there, talking about how do we increase that? And we're talking to high schools. We, we're wondering how we can work with um, the high school students and some of their CTE programs, which is certification, training, and um, or the concurrent credit that we can get. So they could be work-ready, you know, when they graduate from high school. So we have a lot of that going on. Um, underneath this um umbrella of trying to increase access, we're working with the Boys and Girls Club and we thank you so much for your support on the DOLA grant. Uh, we're in, moving along really well in the design and engineer plans. Uh, I think we're down to one last model that we've chosen out of like four. Um, where we talked to licensing just yesterday to find out, you know, are we on the right track? Or do we have enough space in each of these rooms on the plan, et cetera? So we hope to have that done shortly and then we would hope to um be looking for additional dollars, maybe through DOLA, maybe some other opportunities. Maybe, I know the DOLA grant I think is due February. And then we'll be looking at maybe approval next fall. So we're looking at fall of twenty-four before we can maybe have something. But the cost keeps clicking up. Um, I think I heard yesterday that we were thinking it was four point three. I think we're up to five million on a building. Uh, we're looking at four classrooms for infants and toddlers for the babies. We're looking at four to six classrooms for preschool. Um, now is just a tough time, right? With the cost and availability of materials. So, but we'll go with positive attitude and we will chug along. Um, the other um conversation we've been having is um in, with the county in regards to the Rite of Passage Building. And um, that was the item that was, was here on, on the agenda earlier. And we were applying for an employer-based childcare grant. And we just realized that this group just doesn't have enough of those answers or the questions answered quite yet. Um, how are we really going to have a governance structure for potentially these two sites, these sister sites? What kind of investment do we need from our employers? How many employers do we need to make this investment? What is the match? And really down to the design, right? We need an engineered plan so we know what we're getting into before we go with the sledgehammers. That's all I was gonna do is recruit people and sledgehammers and take out a few walls, you know, and make bigger classrooms over there. But um, there's a lot of support from the commissioners on that. They know they have some big issues, you know, in the county. And, and it's one of the areas they'd like to concentrate if we can pull it all together. So we decided to step back, take a pause. There'll be another round um through legislation that passed this, this last session. Um, but we'll have another chance on that particular grant. There might be other opportunities. So we're gonna pause, plan, do a business plan, right? Maybe I'll call you. We do business planning and um, we'll work on that piece. The other part we are doing is recruiting new family childcare. It's a way to move the, the needle just a little bit. If we can recruit at least ten more family childcare, get them licensed, we can really support them along the way. And I think I'm about out of time, so.
And I just want to share for council and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, Sherry. Your efforts are Valleywide um to, to help with providers and connections Valleywide. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, and that's kind of our service area for the Early Childhood Council. And we have partners at the table now representing Rio Grande, Conejos, et cetera. And there's some movement happening in some of these communities. So it's exciting.
And then um, the group also recently, recently being the last six months, did complete a community survey um to try to gather from an employer perspective or employee needs, um, what the demand is and the gaps and the types of childcare um that seem to be needed in the community. So at some point we can forward um those results to council as well.
Absolutely. And we do get to those details a little bit on, on the population, um licensed space, um, what the surveys are telling us. So we can get you something um that's very legible, easy to read.
Okay, Councilor Daniel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Sherry, so much. I just, I love this work and so it's super exciting. I'm really excited about the, the potential new space out of the Boys and Girls Club and all the work that has been done there. Um, and I just wanted to share um with you, talking about the new department at the state. Today we had our Behavioral Health Task Force celebration because the new Behavioral Health Administration starts on July first. And there will be an early childhood mental health specialist on her um steering guiding group, um, all about early childhood behavioral health. And then with all of the things that are happening in the headstarts, in the early, like early preschool or universal preschool, things like that, how all of those are coming together. And I know you've been working on this for so long. And so I just, I'm really excited about the momentum that it has and just want to say thank you for all the efforts and, and hanging in there to make sure these little, the littlest kids get the support that they need and their families too. So thank you.
Thank you for that.
Councilor Hensley, follow up on Councilor Grego.
So it's interesting is I feel like I was sort of on this committee from the very, sort of the beginning. And it was funny, so I was part of the Rise Grant and somehow got tied into this. And at first I was like, why am I part of this group? And um, but at the same time, I learned a lot and I, I, I was proud and I'm very proud to be part of it. And it is something where the, it needs, and you don't have to be a specialist in children, um, just have that concern and that, where you see that that's important because everybody has something to offer and bring to the table. The thing that was really interesting, I thought, was as it continued to grow, we, this shows how important it is because we have pretty um influential people from a lot of these large organizations now that are very involved and really bringing ideas. And it's not just the ideas there, like what do we need to do to help support this? And that, and it has, you've done such a phenomenal, phenomenal job to facilitate and take this sort of small snowball from the beginning and where it's at now and where it's going to continue to go. So thank you for everything you've done, which is hard work.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilor Hensley. Councilor Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. Good presentation, uh, Sherry. Kind of piggybacking on uh city managers' comment about Valleywide Plan. So the facilities, are they going to be here in the beginning and then eventually spread out to each county or how does that work?
Well, that's really how we started thinking about this. We really thought this group um said, let's do this well and let's come together, um, put our resources together. And our, our initial thought was we could build um a, a model or a lab school program that, that others could learn from. You know, we'll have a business plan that they can have. We'll have cash flows. We'll have um all of these things figured out. And we still would be happy to share anything that we learn along the way, but we have some other communities. Um, Marsh, um, really, or really Montavista School District has moved out of their admin office and bought a new building. They're turning their old admin office on campus um into an infant and toddler program and they have their preschool. And we're pretty excited about that. They're also writing this employer-based grant. So they're going to start that with their staff first and then open up to public as they can grow and get a handle on it. So we're going to learn from them just as well, but they're at the table with us. Um, and so we're going to learn from each other as opportunities show themselves in each community. We'll, we'll just support it as, as we can.
Good, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. It's so good to see the community working together to make this happen. So we really appreciate everything you're doing.
It's fascinating and I appreciate all of you and, and our community. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You too. Take care. Okay, Council, next on the agenda, under B one, quarterly update on housing and downtown plans.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Evening.
So I don't have as many exciting things to update you this time. Keep in mind that the last time I did a quarterly update, it was actually a year worth of updates, but it was just at my quarterly time. So this is really just your updates since March. But all exciting stuff, good stuff. So if we want to go to the first slide, so the big news, which you already know, but you know, it's always fun to see it in print, is that our mural is done. Our first mural in thirty years is done for downtown. And although I'm not supposed to widely disseminate it, that is it on the bottom left. It is beautiful. It is gigantic. It was done off-site, which I know has been confusing for everyone. Like your mural's done, but it's not even downtown. So it was done off-site so that um it can be uh fixed and protected from the elements as needed. So David just talked to me today and told me that he put sealant on it and so I think it's ready to go. And I sent an email to Erin Keck yesterday about doing a ribbon cutting, which I hope you will all attend. But again, it's our first downtown mural in thirty years. It's a big deal. Um, I also wanted to give some um shout out to the Purple Pig because they have designed an exceptional sign and they went through our exceptional sign process. So it really is beautiful. I mean, it's, it's been a long time in the, uh, in the making. I think that Jason's had that idea in his mind for all the years since he transformed the Purple Pig and he's just been loyal to his contractors to try to get it done. So I think we should see that sometime this summer. Um, we also installed our final three parklets downtown. So there's one at Hunan's, there's one at Malagros and there's one at the Thai Hut. So no more parklets, but those parklets do belong to the city. And you know, although I, I think they're more or less in their permanent homes, we do have some flexibility in the future if there ever is a need to move them. So next, um, we were awarded one point two million for the Hunt Avenue Cultural Trail. And so that is a rendering of the Hunt Avenue Cultural Trail from our downtown design plan. Um, there were two renderings. One included the farmer's market, but we're putting the farmer's market in the Friday's Health Plan Lot. So I figured that would be disingenuous to include. So um, it is three plot, three blocks between Sixth Street and Third Street. Uh, it's a interactive pedestrian corridor. There'll be movable planters, interpretive storytelling, wayfinding signage, ziruscape landscaping and arts. Uh, it also means we get to do all the fun public work stuff where we tear up the whole street and do all the water and sewer and storm sewer. So I mean, it looks really pretty. It does all the feel-good Rachel stuff, but it also functionally fixes a road that needs help. So all the fun, feel-good Harry stuff too. Uh, pedestrian scale lighting is also an important part of it because it was a safety grant. And so um, we'll do some studies on that. Make sure it's dark night sky friendly, but also keeps our pedestrians safe as they travel from Cole Park to our downtown. And next, um, outreach and relationships, just sort of building on the things we already have. You may have gotten these already, but we did put a really simple, very infographic-heavy flyer in this month's um, utility staffer. And it's really trying to get our constituents comfortable with the idea that, you know, city council didn't just arbitrarily decide to double speeding fines downtown. There's a real reason. There's, there were more pedestrian fatalities in twenty twenty-one than there has been any year in the last forty years. So it's an epidemic in America and it's an epidemic in Colorado. Um, and so any little thing that the city council and the city can do to move the needle so that we're protecting our pedestrians is important. And although doubling speeding fines or lane diet, they might be an inconvenience, they're nothing compared to us actually saving lives. Um, and then we also had a wonderful meeting with the Road and Bridge Director for the Alamosa County. And we're going to talk to the commissioners pretty soon about getting some in-kind support for our parking lots downtown. So they've all got the big cool toys, like they have the big toys and we don't have those as much. And so they're going to help us with some of the demo and grubbing and grading work. That's the end of downtown. So housing has really been the bulk of what I've been working on since I, since I saw you last. So I've given two really great presentations with Dawn Melgaras with the Housing Coalition. One was just, I was honored to sit in on her presentation and just sort of say, yay, city. That was really my part because I didn't have anything to do with writing the grant, but I got to be there when she was awarded the two point one million for the purchase of Boyd. And then we just found out the end of last week, uh, oh wait, no, that's my next slide. I'm going to give it away. We also gave a presentation to DOLA and the Division of Housing about another grant that Dawn and I co-wrote. Um, and it's for the pre-development costs of Boyd. Um, we did the final tour of the Iron Horse Development. They are still having some issues getting themselves opened. We were promised they were paving the first week of June. It's not quite the first week of June and they haven't quite done that yet. So we're just trying to be patient with them and work with them. Almost everybody in our office got to do the tour of Boyd except for myself. I get to look at it out my front window of my home every day. And I've never seen the inside, but I'm still really excited about it. We keep participating in the San Luis Valleywide Housing Studies cohort meetings. Uh, Deacons, their resident land use experts. And then every week we get a really illuminating, beautiful call with CRHDC's architect for the next stage of Montaña Azul, which is Tierra Azul. Um, they aren't as fun as they used to be. I'll say that because our Chro's in the audience, but it's because we're actually start. It's not just beautiful housing and beautiful pictures at this point, which is my favorite part. But right now we're like, well, let's calculate how many cubic feet we can get of, you know, how, how much stormwater is this really and how much park space? And some of it's still fun. I mean, we're thinking we can turn stormwater into a skate park, but at the same time, stormwater conversations are never sexy. And so, you know, that's when we have to start like putting on our, our big thinking hats. And then the next slide, this was my big announcement. We just got on Friday our hundred thousand incentives grant for DOLA and Division of Housing. Um, and this is the one I co-wrote with Dawn. And so it'll be to cover the pre-development costs for the Boyd School, so thirty-four thousand square foot school building and the adjacent property. Um, the funds will be used to desire, to hire a design team to work on feasibility, project-specific equity assessments, financial modeling, site planning, traffic management, energy official, efficiency modeling, capital needs assessments and infrastructure planning. So I believe the highest grant award this program offers is one twenty-five. So we did pretty good. Um, and then we also submitted a congressional-directed spending request to both Senators Bennett and Senator Hickenlooper for six hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars for lift stations and sanitary sewer infrastructure improvements. Um, and so basically they're the ones that were undersized as identified in our master utility plan between where CRHDC is going to be and up into obviously our wastewater plants. Um, so it serves the existing developments in there. Those, those stations are already overtaxed. Some of them are six hundred percent beyond capacity. So it helps put funding towards those. Um, I got to send the best informational video about lift stations you've ever seen. It's like a cartoon from England to um Senator Bennett's rep because she called me and she was like, nobody knows what a lift station is. And I was like, I can't really explain it. So I'm gonna find a cartoon. And now I, I am confident it's circulating its way around DC, just so we all know. Alamosa is responsible for teaching everybody what a lift station is. And we did get a notification today from Senator Hickenlooper's office that we have made it to the next round. So that's very exciting. Then next, I think, I might be done. I might not be done. Am I done? Yay, I'm done.
Right. Good job. Rachel, good job. So, uh, Councilor Vio.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Rachel, thank you for the presentation. When does the Hunt Street project start?
Um, the funds all have to expended, be expended by twenty twenty-five. So I imagine we're going to try to work it into the construction schedule of twenty twenty-three.
And then um, was, I, I don't recall, Council or Rachel, if you can let me know. Was Hunt Street on our list of streets of the Straits, St- Street Sales Tax?
It was not.
No.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, so this is a double win because it's one point two million dollars in grant funding. There's no match from the city. I wrote right into my narrative, we have no money for this project and they still funded it.
Great, great. Councilor Grego.
I had a question also on Hunt. Have you had an opportunity to visit with those business people down there?
We've talked to some of them. So talked to James Billings, talked to the museum, talked to Preston Porter. I think they're in support of it.
Are they receptive of what we're gonna do and stuff?
Yeah. We actually sent a special emissary from our Main Street Committee to go talk to James and sit James down. We actually sent a special emissary from our Main Street Committee to go talk to James and sit James down with the Main Street Plan, and James was really excited about it. So it was a good deal.
Yes. And also, the purchase of the Boyd School, who owned that building?
Right now?
Who who did you spend the two point one million to purchase it?
The sale hasn't gone through and it probably won't go through to the fall, but it's it's a it's a company that belongs to, I think I'm allowed to say, because it's like part of the accessory firm, but it's the cooks. So it's
Oh, good.
Yeah, so it's Dave and and Georgia Cook. So they were approached, Aaron Bultenberger actually brought them in a room and was like, you have to buy this. It's a great idea. And I was in the room and I was COVID positive and I did not know. But we like locked them in that room for the whole day and we're like, you have to buy this building because otherwise non-locals will buy it. And I've worked with Georgia and Dave for years and they're great people and they decided to buy it. And then the coolest thing is that they had higher bids than Don Melgaras. So there were people willing to pay them more for that building, and they chose to sell it to Don so that the childhood education part would stay intact and that Don would keep the gardens, which is just like a beautiful devoted thing for a local company to do for Alamosa.
Okay, Rachel, I just have one question for you. On the Hunt trail and on the street, is the one point two million enough to do the complete project or is there going to be additional monies needed? I'm just curious.
I used very, very detailed calculator, but I can't make, to to calculate everything. I mean, so all the subgrade stuff, all of the fill, all the fun stuff, all the arts. I mean, I even went in and priced in like Russian sage, but the cost of construction right now is ridiculous. So I I really can't speak to anything. I know when I applied for the Ricky Recycling Center, like it's a, it's a basically a lean two. And when I put the grant out, it was a twenty-seven thousand dollar project. And when we built it, it was a thousand dollar project. And everything is the same is happening with Harry, you know, like the costs are just increasing exponentially. So we'll just have to cross our fingers.
I commend you on the grants that you've gotten. I commend you on that. That's awesome. It's great. Thank you so much. Appreciate everything you and your team are doing.
I have a great team. I really do.
Good job.
And I'm not gonna leave.
Think we'll move to the next item on the agenda. And and before we, I just want to make sure that you all know that I will be abstaining from making any voting, any voting at all, and also making any comments on this next item, which is the second reading and public hearing for ordinance number fourteen twenty twenty-two and ordinance annexing the Sierra Vista addition to the City of Alamosa. I I will be abstaining from voting because I do work for CRHDC. Okay.
Good evening. So this is our second reading and our public hearing for ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-two for the annexation of the Sierra Vista addition to the City of Alamosa. So a lot of the things that we would could go through are recaps from last time, but I think it's important just to do the highlights that CRHDC has been working in this community for forty years. They have provided over six hundred houses. They are our housing developer with the greatest track record for success. They have foundational relationships with funders across the state. They have totally shifted how they think about housing developments just at the recommendation of staff, just showing them our housing needs assessment and our housing action plan and telling them you can do better with your land. They did. They've done it wholeheartedly. The development is going to provide housing for the next twenty years of Alamosa. Depending on how fast we grow, it could be faster, which would be crazy. They're a mix of different area median incomes. So you're going anywhere from forty percent area median income all the way up to a hundred and forty. So I mean, these are houses for everybody who, you know, works at City Market to, you know, professors, to some of our people that are working at the hospital. These are a spectrum of housing types. It's a beautiful development. We have pushed really hard that their landscaping will all be ziric, which I think they're on board with. And it's really the future of Alamosa. This is our, this is our very best chance to see our housing action plan come to life. And to talk about some of the infrastructure things, they're responsible for their own roads. They're responsible for their own water and sewer. They will have a subdivision improvement agreement, just like any other developer in the City of Alamosa. Right now, because of the housing crisis and because of the bipartisan infrastructure bill, there's money out there for water and sewer. And so just like Harry and Heather applied for funding with the Energy Impact Mineral Funds, we applied with the congressionally designated funds, and we're just being strategic about the places that are already overtaxed. And conveniently, it is also where CRHDC is planning on building. So it's where our growth has been. It's where our growth will be, and we're looking for infrastructure money to help subsidize some of that. But the burden of development does always fall on the developer, even if it is in the city's best interest to help. So they're still responsible for the roads. They're still responsible for for every other part that makes this development happen. And I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Please follow.
Okay.
Okay, what I'll do now is I will now open up the second reading and public hearing for anyone in the audience. Let me make sure I say all of this right. Open up second reading and public hearing for ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-two and ordinance annexing the Sierra Vista addition to the City of Alamosa. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments at this time, please feel free to come up to the podium.
Thank you, City Council, and good evening. My name's Arturo Alvarado. I am the Executive Director of Community Resources and Housing Valve Corporation, better known as CRHDC. It's a pleasure to address the council tonight in support of annexing the Sierra Vista addition to the City of Alamosa. CRCC has been developing housing for over fifty-one years in the state of Colorado, building communities through personal connections, partnerships, and collaboration. CRCC is proud to have worked in collaboration with local community partners in the City of Alamosa to provide housing solutions to local families to obtain the dream of homeownership for over the past thirty-five years, maintaining a community presence and building over six hundred single-family homes in the City of Alamosa along the way. We've, we've transformed acres of vacant land once filled with chico bush and trash into vibrant neighborhoods, sparing, sparing development of parks, local business, and schools. We have positively positively impacted people's lives by educating community members on the home buying process and working with them on their path to homeownership, providing safe and affordable places for families to live. The homes and neighborhoods we build provide a place where children children can play, families can grow, and life can be lived. When I think of home, I think of meals shared with my family, friends, and loved ones, which includes laughs, smiles, and moments of togetherness. I think of the place where my kids can study, where they can learn, and they can prepare for life. Building from our experience and working in partnership with the city and larger community with the annexation of the Sierra Vista addition, we have the opportunity to not only continue our work, but also meet some of the housing demand identified in the twenty twenty-one City of Alamosa Housing Needs Assessment and the City Housing Action Plan. Over the past few years, as Rachel mentioned, we've been working with your your team here in the City of Alamosa, specifically Heather, Harry, Rachel, Deacon, and Biata. And we've been able to meet on a regular basis and discuss housing demand in the city. Discussion has included the need for diversification housing product type and pre-development details, including infrastructure layout, connectivity, and financial feasibility. City has a great team in place, and we have valued the opportunity to collaborate and learn from one another to evolve our work and submit this annexation application for consideration tonight. We look forward to continued collaboration with the City Council and the City of Alamosa team members to build strong neighborhoods of opportunity in the City of Alamosa. And CRCC asks for your support in annexing the Sierra Vista addition into the City of Alamosa. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to come up and make any comments before we go to the Zoom participants? Nope, don't see any. So we'll go to Zoom right now. And Ms. John, could you give instructions of how raise your hand?
If you are on the Zoom app and you want to speak, you may use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen, or you may press star nine if appearing by phone.
Okay. I don't see any hands raised, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Counselor Grego.
I I had a question. In Rachel's presentation, she talked about the various types of houses that are going to be built in this annexation. So it's not only going to be affordable housing, it's going to be other houses, like you said, for professors and stuff like that.
Conveniently, conveniently, it's all affordable housing. So the way that this definition has changed at the state level has made it so that affordable housing used to only go up really to like eighty percent AMI, which is someone in Alamosa according to their tables that makes like fifty thousand dollars a year. But they've changed it because of the housing crisis, because there's so many working professionals that can't afford housing and the missing middle we're always talking about. And so now the housing goes all the way up to a hundred and forty percent. So I mean, I know we we use the word affordable housing, which affordable housing is what's affordable for anyone. But really, it's like, these are, these are print pipe, these are pinch points and price points that even normal, normal working professionals with pretty good jobs can't afford houses in Colorado anymore. So it is technically the entire thing is an income-based housing development. So it's not market. It's income-based, but it's not, it's somewhere between what we would call low income and market rate.
And to to further elaborate, I think there's different types of housing. So we did put this back up. So some of it's single-family, and then if you want to elaborate maybe on some of the others?
Evidently, the seven-plex went away and I missed it because I have wishful thinking.
Okay.
So I'm gonna let Deacon do this part.
Yeah, so you know, as Arturo mentioned that, you know, as we evolve the discussion and you look at financial feasibility, infrastructure impacts, density, layout, all these things, you know, so this, this plan is is evolving before, you know, it kind of gets presented to the public. So right now, based on some of these other discussions, you know, we're mostly looking at single-family dwellings. We're looking at apartment complexes in townhomes. So kind of a broad spectrum that fulfills a pretty large portion of our needs right now.
One more comment if I might, Mayor.
Sure.
Arturo, I had an opportunity to work with Al Gold for a lot of years, you know, pretty much thirty-nine years. And you're right, you took some areas that, and I keep emphasizing this, that were chicos and dump sites, and you turned them into some real beautiful subdivisions, you know. And like you said, you gave the opportunity for people to have nice homes, you know, and today, affordable housing is, you know, a hundred and forty thousand dollars is a lot of money. Back then, I'm, I think it was thirty thousand and forty thousand, but today. So it's, it's, it's a lot of money that people come up with and and for you, giving them the opportunity to have something safe, nice, and clean is is, it's incredible. So.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Vio.
Hey, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-two and ordinance annexing the Sierra Vista addition to the City of Alamosa.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Need further discussion? If not, please start voting.
And the motion carried unanimously with Mayor Coleman abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, council, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. We're gonna skip on down since we removed item two A. We're gonna move on down to an update on the recall efforts from the district attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Grego had asked for regular updates on the amount expended on the recall efforts. We're really winding down on this, obviously, with next week being the deadline for the certification of the signatures. We are at approximately seven thousand four hundred and seventy-two. Of that, one thousand five hundred was an actual expenditure of cash. The rest of it is tracking of staff time to prepare the petitions and and all of that kind of stuff. The only information we've received from the Secretary of State is they did find six petition packets where there was something wrong with that last page where the certification affidavit is done, but it could be cured. So they sent that to us last week. We submitted the cures this week. So we would anticipate those go well. Our assumption is maybe they start at that big level to make sure the packet's valid, and then they get down into the individual signatures. We've not heard anything further, but they have confirmed that the date we thought, which was June twenty-third, is the date that they're, they have in their books too, from a deadline perspective. The only other update that we've received is that Channel Seven moved their second broadcast on this issue from the thirteenth to June twenty-fourth. And that is all I have from an update perspective.
Okay, Counselor Grego, Dan, Counselor Henson.
I had one question. If this recall goes through, you have to have a special election, correct?
There's different steps in the process, and so depending on how long those steps take, it will either be a special election or it will be folded into the November election.
Okay. And the reason I was bringing it up is that if you have a special election, each county is responsible for paying, and I don't know what the amount is.
We did receive an amount, a total amount from the Secretary of State's office at the beginning. I think we had to include that as part of the ballot or the petition packets. I don't know how much that breaks down for each county.
So they gave you one total amount?
Mm-hmm.
What would the amount was that?
Sixty?
Now, off the top of my head, it's ninety-some thousand
Ninety-some thousand?
For all six counties. But that's off the top of my head. We'd have to pull up a petition section and take a look.
All right. Thank you.
That would be before the election is set, the governor would contact the district attorney to see if he would be interested in resigning. That would then save the cost to the counties of those election costs.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Henson.
I'm, I kind of know the answer, but want to be sure. So if there was the thought that they might tell you some of the things that might be cured prior to the date of the twenty-third, if all of a sudden on the twenty-third, they give that all to you, you still didn't have that time allotment to cure it, even if it's after the twenty-third?
No. What are you shaking?
Well, I I guess I'm not quite, I'm not sure I understood the question. We do have, we can cure things that are curable. Signatures that get thrown out are not curable.
So there's some, okay. So there's gonna be some signatures, like if they were not as a registered, they're, they're, that's not curable. But if if someone was a registered voter, but maybe they used an old address or they didn't include their middle initial or something like that, we can cure those. And yes, we have a timeframe to be able to cure them.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, that's it. Thank you also very much for the update. Appreciate that. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Motion adding Martin Luther King Jr. Day and Juneteenth to the city's observed holidays.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
As we recall, it was about a year or two ago that there is a large movement for organizations and local governments and states to add Juneteenth as as a recognized holiday. There was some communities that did that very quickly. Our recommendation was, let's take a look and and take a look at what we have from the current offering of the city observed holidays compared to what other organizations have. Let's get a feel for what's gonna happen. And so that's what we did and presented that information to to city council. And I think what came to light from those discussions is not only do we not have Juneteenth, but we also are not celebrating Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Now, historically, there's some reasons for that. I don't know all the reasons, but I do know there's a few holidays that we took away and gave them as personal days and and some stuff like that. But I feel, based on council communication, when discussing this, was not honoring either one of those in a way is making a statement that we're no longer comfortable with. And so council was discussing if we should add either or both of those holidays, and I'll turn it over to you for that continued discussion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks. We'll go ahead and start off with Counselor Daniel, and I'll recognize the other councils as you light up your mics.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Heather, for bringing this to our consideration and attention. I feel, and and council, we know we just talked about this, but I think the public discussion is important. I feel like what Heather said is a hundred percent accurate. If we do not honor these holidays, what Heather said is a hundred percent accurate. If we do not honor these holidays as such, we are making a bigger statement than if we add these to our, um, our community celebration time and our staff's celebration time. And I think that they absolutely deserve the recognition that they have received nationally, um, and that we owe it to our community and our teams, right, our, our community to observe these holidays, um, because they are such a big piece of people's lives and need to be, need to be honored in, in all of our communities regardless. So I am one hundred percent in support of this.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Veo?
Thank you, Mayor. I too am in a hundred percent in support of both these holidays being observed by the city. I think it's a, a, a great way to to show our city that we, we appreciate Martin Luther King and, and the end of slavery. And I think it also shows, uh, the very small African-American community in our city that we appreciate those, those events and those efforts and, and that might go a long way to the, to, um, with Adam State. As we know, there's a lot of African-American students who go there, and I think that's important, and that needs to be honored. So, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Veo. Counselor Grego?
Yeah, I, I had a comment, uh. I was, I was born and raised here in Alamosa, and I, I've lived in a community that's been divided back then. You know, and we have taken steps to unite this community and, and this might be one, one of the areas where we finally, we finally step up the plate and say, hey, what is right, right? Let's start honoring people, the right people, you know? Like I said, uh, back in, when we were growing up, this community was quite divided. You know, and we're talking about Hispanics then. So, you know, through the years, I've seen it. You know, I've been on this council for a lot of years and through the years, through the, the young people that have come on have changed it, and it's important to, this, you know, you ask why it wasn't changed back then, you know? I hate to say this, but there was a lot of prejudice going on. And that's, that's the way I interpret it. That's why it wasn't changed. So now today, we realize that, you know, we need to step up the plate and honor people and, and this is the way to do it, you know? I hope one day that there might be the, a, a holiday for Hispanics, you know? But this is something that I, I, I totally support one hundred percent.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Daniel?
If there's no further, um, conversation, I will move that we add Martin Luther King Junior Day and Juneteenth to the city's observed holidays.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? I'll just add a comment. I would like to commend my colleagues for, um, helping us move this forward for staff. And then I would like to encourage everyone who's not familiar with the two holidays to do some research, go online, and, and find out more about uh, the Juneteenth, um, holiday and the events, uh, that led up to that. Um, and also do some research on Dr. Martin Luther King as well, and then spread and share the information that you have with others as well. Okay, start voting.
The motion carry unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Okay, that brings us to the next item. To determine the, for filing, um, for the filing of the, filling of the vacancy created by, um, Counselor Woodward's resignation.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, we received Counselor Woodward's resignation effective June eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, his resignation letter was attached to the agenda if anyone wanted to review that. His term was going to end November twenty-twenty-five. And per the, the ordinances and statutes, council can appoint someone to fill that until the next election, which would be November seventh, twenty-twenty-three. And so, um, the issue before you tonight is to discuss roughly what kind of process you might wanna use in making that appointment. So that person would serve until November seventh, twenty-twenty-three. They could decide if they wanna run. I don't know if they'll run opposed. And then they would, then that, it would be a term that still ends November of twenty-twenty-five. In the past, what we, council has done, since, since I've been here, there's been three times, um, council is elected to do a process where you solicit letters of interest from the public. You, ahead of time, discuss, um, interview questions, and you conduct interviews of those people who are interested. Um, I believe that's how we got Mayor Coleman and Counselor Daniel two times onto this council is, is through that process. So, um, I did, if, if that is the direction council wanted to move in, I took a look at maybe, you know, what a timeframe could be. But at this point, I'll turn it over to you to discuss the process.
Okay. Counselor Grego?
Can you explain again why in twenty-twenty-three they have to run again? Is there, is that part of the process, Eric?
Yeah, so the, the general background for that is that council members are elected by the people, not appointed by a self-propagating council. And the idea is then you need to fill a vacancy, but the next time you have an opportunity to have an election, you should so that the people can speak. Um, if you, if you had a vacancy, for instance, right before an election, you might elect not to fill it 'cause why appoint somebody to serve for just a couple months? But you've got a vacancy now that pursuant to the charter, and the charter says you shall appoint someone to serve until the next general election. So you're bound by the charter, that's what you're doing. And since it is so long until the next general election, I think it makes a lot of sense to appoint somebody to fill that vacancy.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Henson?
So I like the idea. Um, so in my time here, um, I've experienced those ones that we talked about. And what it does is allows those that have interest at this point to go ahead and obviously send that letter to us. Um, and that interview process, uh, to pick that person, 'cause it is, it is a very important position, um, up here, uh, with us at city council. And, um, so anyway, I like to say it seems like the sharp, is it sharp way to go about it and has worked, so we might as well keep going with something that has done well for us.
And I am tired, so I neglected to say we've had some people who are a bit of a step ahead of us, and we have received three letters of interest already. I'm not gonna share names. Um, but we have received three letters already of interest.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor Grego?
Is there, do we have to set up like a deadline of when we're gonna do this?
Well, if, if council's interested in doing a similar process, um, I, I kind of scoped out what a potential timeline could be that I could run by you. So if you're done discussing process, I could talk timeline. Anybody, should I talk timeline?
Uh, yes, go ahead and talk timeline.
Okay, um, we could do an advertisement and have letters due July first. I feel it's just a letter, um, that should be sufficient for someone to decide if they wanna interview or not. Um, looking at potential times, we could combine it with July thirteenth and keep the work session limited from six to seven, and then you could do interviews seven and after. We can also split it onto some other nights. There's availability before some of your other meetings, like July twentieth, August third, and August seventeenth. So there are some openings coming up if we wanna keep it on a Wednesday night.
Okay, uh, Counselor Daniel?
So, as having been through those processes, I, I like, I like the idea of the, the interview. Um, I think that that, it, it felt very transparent, um, the last time, and I think, um, I feel like that was a good process for the community to see as well. And so as being a part of that from a different perspective, I, I feel like it was a really helpful thing. And then the election one that I was in was a whole, like, I mean, it was just a fascinating, it's been a fascinating process to fill someone's seat both times. And so it's really been, um, I really appreciated the, the interview process.
Thank, thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor, um, Grego, then Counselor Henson?
Is, uh, July first too soon, or is that something that we wanna move on with fast?
It's up to you. So it's July fifteenth, so it'd, it'd be the rest of this week, and it would be two more weeks to submit a letter.
July fifteenth?
July first. It's just when they have to get the letter turned in. It's just a letter.
Okay, I'll just ask you a question.
Yeah, no worries. Um, Counselor, uh, Hensley, and then I believe Counselor Veo had something.
If this is the route we take, and this is just a preference I'm throwing out there, my preference would be to try to do as many of the interviews at one time versus breaking it up. I feel like, you know, obviously, where, where we might be at that moment versus the next time, and then also, I just, so that would be one thing I guess I would try to push for is if we could even do them all at once, but if not, really try not to break it down up too far.
And there's a chance, the two items that we had scheduled for the thirteenth, I can get to a different night, and we can just dedicate the thirteenth to that. Um, but I was looking at it quickly today.
No, so that, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but that would be my preference.
Okay, Counselor Veo? Okay, so it sounds like we're all in agreement.
What I-
I would just like to say, get it done as fast as we can.
What we can do then also from a staff perspective is see if we can find what the questions were last time, um, and get that to you, and then maybe on July sixth, we can add time for you guys to review the questions and provide some feedback from a work session perspective, not a regular meeting.
I'm quite sure we're gonna add some additional questions this time, so.
Do you need a motion on this?
Hmm, I don't feel like, and Eric is shaking his head.
All right, we're good. Brings us to the next item, committee reports. Counselor Grego? I know you have one.
I, I, I got a big one here. Uh, I, the mayor and I, we attended the Community Recreation Advisory Board, and like I said, it, there is a lot of stuff that was discussed, a lot of good stuff. But I just wanted to kind of point some of it out and, uh, and then, uh, if you have some other stuff that you wanna bring up, Mayor, then you can go ahead and, uh, maybe elaborate on it.
Okay.
But, uh, some of the stuff that I, uh, we had a group from, a guy from, uh, Disc Golf. And I can remember when we started Disc Golf, we thought it it was like a joke, you know, what, what are we, who are the guys gonna do? Playing out there in, in the Chico's, trying to make baskets and stuff. But it's come a long ways. You know, they, they have, uh, put together a group out there that have, uh, they raised s- some, some money to buy new baskets. They've, uh, purchased some new signs out there. They've done a lot, you know, they've, they've, they've had tournaments that, uh, that brought over forty people in it, you know, to, we can, uh, to spend money in, in our community and go to this. So it's, it turned out to be a, a, a really great thing that, uh, we, some of us thought, well, it was a crazy idea, but it turned out to be really good. Uh, earlier, we talked about grants during our audit, uh, we were able to get two grants. Uh, one for fourteen thousand from Colorado Parks and Wildlife, and ten thousand dollar grant from U S Forest. Uh, this big one here that, that we, uh, we, they submitted a grant in, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, not, for four point five million dollars for the Alamosa Pedestrian Bridge and Rio Grande near the Adam State College. And that's something that, uh, we were talking about earlier about big grants and stuff, and this is something that, uh, there's a group of, that, that are submitting for bigger, bigger money, so we're hoping that maybe they look at the small amount and we get, uh, the grant. But I, I, you know, I have a design and stuff, and John, John went through it fairly well, and uh, there's a lot of people participating, but the county gave forty thousand dollars in that, you know, and that's, you know, when I heard that, I said, whoa, this, everything's turning around. The county's starting to participate with a lot of stuff, which is, which is good. So the, one of the other stuff that, that I looked at him, I was kinda amazed, you know, there's something for everybody out there, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna go ahead and do oil painting, you wanna do ceramics, you wanna do, uh, first, let's see here.
Chess?
Yeah, there, there, I was just amazed that there was something, you know, if somebody said, we're not addressing something, we're addressing everything in, uh, chess, wizard, champ. Uh, there's, and the numbers are up, like especially on, on that T-ball. You go over here by, is it Sunset? Right there by Bangshot. Boy, you can't, the cars that are packed, and, and they've been, they're up, they have increased so much, so. They have done a great job, and there's, even though, even when I was there at the meeting, the use of the facilities, you know, and even, uh, the all-purpose pavilion, there has been used good, so. They're doing a great job. So I don't know, Mayor, if you need, oh, the, the CIP, they went over, the CIP also. And then, uh, some of the stuff, so. If you want that, something, there, so.
Cool thing about being on the breakboard with Counselor Grego, he takes real good notes. So I just add a little few sprinkles to it. So Counselor Grego mentioned the two grants, the ten thousand and the, um, fourteen thousand. The ten thousand dollar grant was for nauseous weeds, if I'm not mistaken, which is really good, and we're, we're doing, they're doing a lot better job and getting that under control. The fourteen thousand dollar grant, uh, was a grant to help get more people of color to do more outside activities, if I'm not mistaken, the way, uh, Andy and his team explained it. And so they're doing a lot of different things on the south side of town so that they could make sure they incorporate more activities for people, uh, to participate in. The other thing, um, that I just wanna add to what Counselor, uh, Grego mentioned was, um, the carnival that was here at the park, uh, I think is very important for people to know. Andy pointed this out, that the carnival, uh, gave back to the city, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, twenty-three, twenty-three thousand dollars. Uh, so a lot of times people will make comments, uh, that the carnival comes into town, it, it makes all the money in the, in, in the area, then they leave. That's not necessarily true. They come into town, they provide entertainment, and then they give the city twenty-three thousand dollars, which we could use for other uh, things down the road. Um, the other thing, uh, that I have here on my notes is that, um, the, the big Rio Trio happened this weekend. Over a hundred and thirty participants, uh, showed up. Fifty-seven were people from Alamosa, twenty-nine, um, were from the San Luis Valley, and we had over fifty people participate that were from outside of the valley, which is, which is awesome. And then, uh, finally, we, we, we can't, we cannot, uh, mention a huge thank you to Ms. Heather Dutton um, for her help in making sure, Counselor Grego can probably explain more about how water is released and all that, their kind of stuff, but thanks to her, we had water in the river for people to float down. That's the way I can explain it in simple terms. So let's send out a huge shout out to Ms. Dutton for that, and Counselor Grego, I'll pass it back to you.
I'm glad you brought that up because, because of these partnerships, it's, it's great, you know? We're not, now we're partnership with the school district, Adam State College. That's great that we're all working together because we're all, with the citizens and for our youth, so. Thank you, man.
You're welcome. And then two other things, yeah, they've been really busy over there. The upstairs, uh, walking track has been resurfaced. And also, um, they resurfaced, if I'm not mistaken, the, uh, basketball court area as well. So I encourage you all to go there. It's really, uh, looking good. And, um, and you can see me and Counselor Grego, we, we pay attention. That's right. Good job. So that's, that's all we have today.
I just wanna say, when I miss a record meeting, you guys take your job a lot more seriously reporting out.
That's true. That's true. Thank you. Okay, any other committee reports? All right, so now, since there are no other committee reports, we'll go down to, um, staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Harry, if you wanna make your way up. We have a few updates from Harry, and then also just a reminder, next week, um, most of council, myself and Rachel will be up in Breckenridge for the Colorado Municipal League Conference. And so it's always a great conference. We, it never fails, we learn something and, and have takeaways, um, from the conference. And Harry, if you wanna talk about the few items we discussed?
Thank you. Um, State Avenue, kind of a quick update on that. We got the infamous, uh, underground storage tank. Um, luckily enough, the State Department contacted us last week, gave us the approval to go ahead and fill it in and, and, you know, move forward with no other action needed. So it's a big relief. Did cost quite a bit of money, uh, impacted our budget a little bit, but at least we can move forward. You know, once we got that tank filled in, we filled it in with concrete, left it in place. We didn't wanna take a chance of compromising, you know, the, the foundation of the green spot. So got that filled in, you know, we've started- So got that filled in, you know, we've started with the concrete work in front of Ruthie's place and uh prepared the road for asshole. So big step for us, and now we're kind of pulling all the construction back, regrouping there at Seventh Street. We started with the uh first mat for paving this week, or actually today. Uh we should wrap that up probably tomorrow, possibly end of Friday. So that'll complete the road from Sixth all the way through Ninth Street intersection, about half a block there. So it's kind of a big thing for us. It's about a halfway point. Um we'll open it up to the public on Monday, let it cool down. We got a couple of warm days ahead of us, so we want to give it some time to to kind of set up and cool down a little bit for us. So um halfway through the project, though, kind of regrouping the tank through us for a loop, threw us out of off our schedule. Um but uh as far as a budget goes, we're, we haven't gone over our budget yet, but it, we're pushing our contingency pretty hard. You know, as Rachel mentioned earlier, everything's kind of gone up. You know, we prepare our budgets a year ago um pretty conservatively, but with the price of oil and what we're seeing in the diesel market, you know, it's affected it. So next couple of weeks, or next council meeting, we'll bring kind of a proposal on how to move forward. Utilize maybe some of the savings we've had still in our tree uh street trust fund uh to complete State Avenue, so. Um we had a sewer main, obviously, collapse again there on Main Street. It's a three thousand foot line. It's an old clay tile line. It's sixty years old. Um it's lived its service life. The biggest problem with it is on the state highway. We have one sixty and two eighty-five. It's a major intersection. It's eighteen inches of the concrete that's reinforced. So we know it's becoming urgent to try to get a solution uh for this quickly. I've reached out to a couple of different companies. A few of our options would be slip lining, where they try to insert a pipe within a pipe. Um availability of that material is somewhat limited. A second solution we're looking at is it's uh called CIPP. And basically, it's uh, it's a cured and placed pipe is what it's called. They take kind of almost a, it's a fiber reinforced sock, and they impregnate it with uh a rosin, and they shoot that down the line, and then they pressurize, and then it expands. And it actually, in some cases, it breaks the existing line if it's if it's even weak, and it becomes your new new line and new system. So we're looking at kind of the engineering specs on that and see if that's a solution for us. We think it is versus uh disturbing the state highway. Um but it also comes at a price tag, but we know this is something we just have to deal with, and and it's becoming pretty immediate. So again, the next couple of weeks, I'll have some proposals um to council and see if we can get approval to move forward with that.
As you know, um we did finish the year out a little bit better from a revenue perspective on twenty twenty-one. The other is um this would be an ARPA eligible project. And so we're still continuing the pressure to try to get grants for the other items that were identified for ARPA to free up um for when we have these unexpected issues as well. So um when Harry brings this forward, we'll have an idea of where we might be able to try to pull the funds from as well.
Unless you have any questions.
Good job. Keep it up. All right, thank you. Any other staff announcements?
Sorry, Mayor, no, that is it.
Okay, no worries. Awesome. Okay, that brings us down to uh consent calendar B. Counselor Daniel.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar B.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No. There with me. All right, there we go. Start voting.
And the motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good. All right, that brings us to the last item on the agenda, council uh comments. Counselor uh Vio and Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to add a little history to your comments, Mr. Gregel, about the um disc golf. I had a conversation with Ken Marquez, who's one of the leaders out there, I think, maybe in charge of the SLV DGA, San Luis Valley Disc Golf Association. There's a, there's a disc golf course outside of Capulee that just closed down. And that lady uh was wanting to sell her baskets. And so the the association, along with uh Andy, uh came in together at to purchase these baskets, um shared the cost. And so the first eighteen holes now, Mr. Gregel, are at uh, there's alternate pin placements. There's alternate pin placements, so you have the original baskets, and then they put another basket. So it's a, makes it a little bit more challenging, or it's a different route to the hole, you know, stuff like that. So um there are right now forty-five baskets out there. Um they're also, they also have hosted some uh disc golf, like the like the pros, like the it would be like the NFL for disc golf here in in Alamosa, Colorado. So it's just really taken off, and I want to just hi- highlight that work of of Ken Marquez and that group. So, thank you.
Counselor Gregel.
Who was the gentleman that was at the, that gave us the presentation, Andy? Because he he gave us a lot of information, and and like you said, there's purchases. You know, they, I guess they had paid nine thousand for them, and they were able to get them for three thousand, and they came up with half of the money, you know.
So Robert Anderson is on the rec board, and he's an avid disc golf, disc golfer.
Yeah.
And your numbers are right.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Andy.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Andy, for that clarification for these two. I appreciate that. Uh Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I I just wanted to say how much I really appreciate all the staff work um on the grants and all of the work that is happening um to manage them and bring them in and continuing to look for creative ways to help fund things. I think um that has just grown exponentially in the last few years, and you all are doing a wonderful job. Um I'm also really impressed and pleased with the amount of diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts that are happening in partnership with the city and how we are supporting that. I feel like we are making really strong steps, saying that that inclusivity and respect is an important part of our community. And I feel like we are living that with how we're partnering, and I just wanted to say thank you. Um I'm really proud of that work. I'm also really proud of the fact that we had a great audit, so thank you, Lisa and Heather. That was, it was wonderful to hear uh from All Smith and Bateman today. Um and that we're going to have a celebrating Alamosa Day. Like that just makes me really proud as a city councillor and really excited for the things that are happening. Um and so I just wanted to say thank you for the council retreat. I feel like the city manager and everyone that participated set it up really well, and it it um I I feel like it was a good uh retreat for us, and I'm really looking forward to the networking and communication we can have at CML. Um and then, as I mentioned earlier during Sherry's presentation, the Behavioral Health Administration in the state of Colorado is becoming effective July first. This is a huge step in behavioral health transformation in our state, and a huge step in the way things will get done and the way things will be, people will be served in our communities. And so I do think that we have an opportunity to have more capacity and more services in rural areas because of the efforts that are happening at a state level and the efforts that are happening within our local community mental health center and the other, the other people that are working on behavioral health issues and concerns. Um and so rural areas were a high, high priority in the state's uh Behavioral Health Transformation Task Force. And I I want us to know that in Alamos. I want us to know that um voices were heard, and things will will change. And with any change takes time, and with any transformation, it's going to be difficult. But I think we have a wonderful opportunity to work with our behavioral health partners and work with our community mental health centers and other professionals and telehealth and all of that to really help the people in our community get their needs met when they are having behavioral health crises. But the first step is having the conversations that we need to have and saying, it's okay to have a behavioral health crisis. It's okay to be have behavioral health needs and challenges that are happening, and those conversations happen one-on-one. And our Behavioral Health Administration is not going to be able to do its work if we don't do our work. And so we have to start telling people it's okay to get help. And so I'm really excited about the things that are happening in our state, but we also have responsibility here to make sure people access those services, so. And I'm super pumped that it's it's happening, and we're we're a part of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Gregel, then Counselor Henson.
Good job, Counselor Dennis. I I also like to thank uh Heather and Lisa, Lisa for the audit. You know, when Jessica said that uh ten years ago or more, we used to have people camp in here. You know, because of our audits, they they'd had it straighten out a lot of stuff, so they've come a long ways, and you guys have done a great job. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Gregel. Counselor Henson.
So the last couple of weeks, when you look at it, the amount of things that we've done in our city in regards to the Summer Fest, the Carnival, the uh uh the Trio, the uh, I didn't say the car show, uh having the first Friday, having then the events that Square Peg had, and all of these different things going on. And how awesome it is for all of our employees that we have such awesome employees because they're out there working extra hard to make all these events go well. You got the police out there making sure that we're really safe. Their presence was really felt and seen on all of those events, which was really nice. Obviously, we had fires during all this. I kept hearing fire trucks everywhere, so the fire department being really busy. The um street crew uh obviously working in this heat and having those extra jobs, that Main Street thing. And that was a a major thing where they had to come together. Um the audit, all of these things, um people that are more behind the scenes that we may not see as much. But I just think that this last two weeks, it really showed me, and when people say there's nothing to do in Alamosa, there's tons to do. Um and so anyway, just but it also, what makes it so great is the idea that we have so many great people working for us, and then also the volunteers that all help as well. So anyway, just want to commend everybody.
Thank you. Thank you so much, uh Counselor Henson. Okay, all right. Well, I'll wrap things up, everybody. Just going to add to some of the things. Um we had a meeting last week with the um Alamosa County Commissioners, like a, not really a meeting, but a sit-down dinner. We have a very wonderful working relationship with our Alamosa uh county colleagues, the uh county manager and the county commissioners. We all meet at least once a year, or once or twice, we try to get to twice a year. We sit down and talk about different projects we're working on, and it's like, the best way to describe it is that we 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 work in harmony together, and it's so good to see um us all working together as a team for the greater good of the entire county of Alamosa and city. And and I also would like to send a special thank you to uh Lisa and Heather for the audit. Um their boards I'm on, sometimes it's not as, doesn't, you don't get results like this that you all uh had to tonight, earlier today. Uh so keep up the great work, and um we really appreciate all of that because that's what helps our city uh to be able to keep going. And that's all I have. And if there are no other comments, this meeting is adjourned.